All right, good evening. It is 5:31. I'm Shanna Cox, Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I am calling this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. May I have the roll call, please? Yes. Roger Dupree.
Here.
Michael Markov.
Present.
Lucy Bisson here. Mark Roy.
Here.
Shanna Cox.
Here.
Amy Smith.
Here.
Alexander Pine.
Here.
Penthea Burns.
Here.
And Zoe Lidstrom.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
No, there aren't.
Am I allowed to propose one? Sure. Okay.
I'd like to add an agenda item to the end to have a quick conversation about helping the city improve their customer service.
May I call that Other Business E? Any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there correspondence this evening?
No, there is not.
Thanks. We don't have any public hearings this evening? Great. Welcome to Other Business, everyone. We'll begin with, A, the Planning Board initiating ordinance changes for compliance with recent legislation, as well as other updates.
The memo outlines 10 areas where staff is recommending that we make some changes. Many of them are minor or short. They'll be pretty straightforward changes. Seven of the, six or seven of them are related to legislative updates that occurred in the last two years. And then there's a couple of additional ones that staff is suggesting. I am happy to go through them item by item, or if you're okay with moving forward with discussion and then decision as to whether you want to initiate those changes, that's fine, too.
Thanks. Can I ask one clarifying question? For all of the ones that are referencing LD legislation that required it, is there any amount of discussion that would change our ability to call ourselves into compliance and move forward with those recommendations as required by law?
Most of them are really cut and dry, so no.
So that proposed to the board that we accept items 1 through 5 as presented and limit our discussion to 6 and on?
Do you want us to do a motion to take care of those, and then we can discuss the others later?
Or we could have discussion, and if there's nothing that would change in items 6 through 10, then we could take it all as one.
Okay.
Mr. Markov?
I prefer a discussion on each and every one of them. I do have some comments and/or questions on a couple of them. One of them is in the first five.
Okay. Given Shelly's question, would you like to discuss them one by one, then? It seems like you'd prefer to.
I'd prefer to.
Okay. Well, let's take up discussion on ADUs, number 1. Shelly, is there anything that you'd like to say about it that's not written in the memo?
No, there isn't.
Thanks. Were there questions about item number 1?
I guess just overhauled that would encompass all of the LDs. And that is, try to formulate the question since I didn't prepare it ahead of time. Where does the state get the authority to dictate how we comprise our ordinances?
So while we are a home rule state, we have authority over the things the state doesn't already direct. So we don't have complete municipal control. So we are required to meet the standards that they set for us, and then we can be, you know, we can go above and beyond what they require, but we can't be less stringent than what they require.
I'm glad you mentioned home rule because earlier today I wrote that down somewhere. And wondering where would we find those guidelines on what is home rule and what's not?
I can certainly try to get you information on that. I don't have that tonight for you.
Title 38.
Okay. Title 38. Okay. Well, that's all I have for the first one, anyway.
Anyone else on item 1? Item 2? Item 3, parking standards?
Okay.
Did you have something for 2?
Yeah, just reading it as you. Went quickly over it. So, I read LD 1143 requires municipalities to accept setback variance applications for all dwelling units, not just single family homes. Is there a?
I'm sorry, I didn't really hear you. Can you?
Okay.
I think you was just reading out loud the items in the memo?
Yeah, I was reading the first sentence. LD 1143 requires municipalities to accept setback variance applications for all dwelling units, not just single-family homes. So, some municipalities not in the practice of accepting setback variance applications for all dwelling units, and that's why this is now in place?
So it's very specific state language. There's a couple different kinds of variances related to residential structures that could be applied for. There's a specific setback variance for single-family homes in state statute, and we have parroted the exact same language. That has now been amended so that it is not just single-family homes that that setback variance can be granted for. So we are just going to mirror that changed language.
So historically, we would not have had to accept variance applications for certain dwelling units?
They would have been able to apply for a different setback. It wouldn't have been that, sorry, a different variance. It wouldn't have been that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Parking standards, number 3.
So, just reading this, the adjustments may be needed. So are we, is staff still figuring out what adjustments might need to happen, or is it sort of clear? Because from reading the first section, it seems pretty straightforward that just like if it's in a designated growth area, we reduce the parking standard for those two building types. End of discussion. Is there more work that needs to be done to figure out what needs to happen, or?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Our action tonight is to initiate the things that would come back to us with many of these questions being addressed for further discussion and public comment. Is that right?
Yeah, when we come back, we'll have a red line version of changes.
So tonight is our ability to say, yes, please make us compliance with state law. We look forward to further discussion with additional information.
Yeah, we tried to provide enough information so you would have an understanding of it, but yeah, we aren't prepared to discuss all the nitty-gritty. But I will say some of the issue is that we have a number of zoning districts that are within our growth area, and then they're not all treated the same way relating our parking standards. So we do need to do a bit of a look at the map to figure out where our zoning districts intersect with that. And I think there's a couple different ways we can change that to be consistent if we need to make changes. So at this point, staff isn't sure exactly how we're going to answer this problem. Yep.
Alex?
So, yeah, just piggybacking on that, I feel like, you know, earlier in the summer or something, we had a case where we were like, oh, or, you know, an application or something where we wanted to talk about parking requirements. So I don't know if we could look back and see, you know, if we're going in and doing language around parking requirements, if any of those other issues could be addressed at the same time, and we could just adopt it all at once. I'll try to remember.
I see staff making a note. Any other questions about number 3?
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning growth areas because I thought it was all encompassing. So this is just limited to, you know, what's considered a growth area, and is that something that maybe we apply for grants and such from the state?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with grants. When you do your comprehensive plan, there is a requirement that communities identify areas where they want growth to be encouraged, and then areas where they would limit growth. In two years ago, when the state passed LD 2003, they started using the term growth areas in a much more specific way, identifying that the growth areas, you know, had to allow a certain number of dwelling units per lot and that sort of thing. Previous to that, communities, that requirement and the comprehensive planning really hadn't been used in such a prescribed way. In fact, there are communities that don't have comprehensive plans, so they wouldn't have a growth area necessarily. So this is a term that we've started to pay more attention to in the last couple of years as planners because of that. And in order to comply with LD 2003, we looked at our future growth map in the comprehensive plan, determined where were the areas that we had designated as growth was encouraged versus meant to be kept steady and not increased. And that's how staff identified the growth overlay that you then adopted, which was a new overlay that was added to our zoning map, so that we could actually answer the question of which parcels were in the growth area and which weren't on a case-by-case basis when people would ask what was allowed.
So this is for communities of certain sizes, probably, as I heard you mention it, not all municipalities have a comp plan?
So if you want to have zoning, you have to have a comprehensive plan. So, for example, Rumford doesn't have zoning. They may not have a comprehensive plan, but they might choose to have one as well. So it really depends on the community, what they've done.
So they wouldn't fall under this requirement?
The law, or what was passed, I think, may also have talked about sewer and water some of the time they did, and sometimes they didn't. I can't remember if parking is one of them. So I don't know exactly how it would apply in another community, but because we have a growth area, that element of this does apply to us.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on parking standards?
Shelly, how did they go from 2 parking spaces to .75 spaces? You identified .75 space.
Yeah, so we did that a couple of years ago. I think you were on the planning board at the time. We had identified the downtown, more dense districts, and made a decision to reduce the residential parking standards that we had in place. Why did we settle on .75? I think that there was an intent to still require some parking for multifamily, so that there would be parking provided, and that was, that was the number that the board settled on.
I think you looked at.
It just sounds ridiculous.
I think they looked at car ownership rates in the downtown district, which related to about 70% of people don't regularly have access to cars, and so the need for parking that takes other commercial spots and maybe even better return on our tax dollars was part of the thinking into the number at that time.
I still think it's ridiculous. I mean, why don't just go 1 parking space instead of 2?
If it's a 2 unit, then it's, then it's 1 and 1/2, and you got to round up, and you get your 2.
One person doesn't get to park.
Questions on number 3? We're going to move to daycares? Were there questions on daycares? Or comments? Alex?
Is there any, because I'm pretty sure most of our zones allow for residential uses, right? I think it's everything except for industrial, I want to say.
Yes.
So would there be any harm to having this across the board in all the use charts? Or for all the columns in the use chart where residents are approved? Or is there a reason to sort of make it a smaller group?
So at this point in time, there are a few districts, some of the, well, let me just pull up the chart, and we can talk about it more specifically.
Just to be clear, this could also be just sort of something that goes into thought when we get text back. It's just more sort of a general question. I don't necessarily need the answer.
It'd be great if we prefaced the question with, when staff proposes language, could you address?
Yeah.
And then it would give time for the staff to research it and provide it to us when we see it at a future point?
Yep. That's the intention.
Okay. I think Shelly's getting a lot of questions that sound like they need answers tonight.
Well, I mean, you'll have.
I don't know if that's the endeavor.
You'll have a red line. So you'll see the chart, you'll see what currently is allowed, and you'll see how we're going to change it.
Okay.
So potentially, it's a conditional use permit now, and then it wouldn't be a conditional use permit. Potentially, it's not allowed now. It would be.
Okay.
There's a note in here, I think, about parking requirements or something, and that might potentially go away. So there, you'll see the red line changes that.
That's great. And I think my specific request for the future is if there could be a little material provided on sort of the thought process of who got redlined and who didn't. You know, which section got changes and which didn't.
So, and I'm just noticing one of them is a requirement that it be attached to like a religious facility, so if it's accessory to that. So what you're going to probably see is that wherever staff has identified that we think and we're still reading the language in the legislation, and it's not the most clear language. So we are going to try our best to apply it with guidance. So we will do our best to explain that, but it will be probably a consistent application where there's a residential zoning.
Got it.
Alex, I'll jump in and say that daycare centers that are, you know, more than 12 children are, they are allowed pretty much in every zoning district except for the residential ones, which we will be listing. So any downtown district, highway business, community business, those already do allow all ranges of daycares.
Got it. Okay. That makes more sense. Thank you.
And I don't know if I made it clear in this, that what we're proposing doesn't fully come into compliance with LD 1428. The reason being that I understand that the sponsor of the bill may be looking to make some changes in the upcoming legislative session to clarify, as well as to address some issues that people have identified. So we are proposing to fix things at the level we think will be necessary, and then another fix might come in the spring, depending.
Is there, is there a time change duration from which we have to come into compliance after a bill is passed? I guess my request would be that you, that we don't approve language until we know that that bill to change is either dead, and we're using the language as it's written now, or if there is an approved bill coming. It'd be nice not to vote and duplicate both our time and your time if you are expecting changes.
So at this moment in time, if somebody came to staff and wanted to do a daycare where it's not currently allowed, we would need to approve it. So that was effective September 24th. With any of these things, if somebody came and wanted to do an ADU where they have like a three-family, we would have to allow that. So we can certainly delay making a change to come into compliance because we do know as staff that we need to approve something regardless. So if you wanted to wait, we could do that. I am familiar with the language that is being proposed as the bill fix, although of course it's draft at this point, so it's not final language. So you're right, things could change. It could change in committee. There's all sorts of things that could happen.
It just seems like you're going to have your hands full. Maybe that could be at the bottom of the list, and we could wait out a little bit getting language that's final if it works that way. Alex?
Just to make sure that I have an understanding of this, because I think it applies to a lot of the work we do. So when the bill is signed into law on the state level, we must comply with it on some basis. If we don't have something written in our books that says this is how we will comply, it's just sort of a free-for-all, just like, nope, you got to approve it, this is state law. There isn't really, you know, we can't say it must be this or it must be that. It's sort of a gray area that has to just be done. Is that, is that correct?
That's fairly accurate. So in this case, where a use currently isn't allowed, but we now are required to allow the use, we would have to allow it. That doesn't mean that we can't review it or regulate it potentially. In this case, I'm unclear as to whether we can regulate it based on how it's written. So we're still, that's still part of what we're hoping will get fixed. But if a large daycare wanted to come into the city, it's possible we would have to approve it without development review.
And we would have to go by the state language, not like ours. We couldn't say, you know, Lewiston laws, all daycares must have a red roof.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to say that. It would just be like.
Yeah. The alternative would also to be to put a moratorium in place, so that we had a chance to write an ordinance that said that we needed a red roof on all daycares.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that process clarification.
Alex, in answer to your question, there are some pieces of legislation that'll give a date in the future.
Yes.
When it needs to be enacted by or put in place by to give the municipalities time. So if it doesn't, that's what you're talking about, once the, once the timeframe is up?
Whatever the effective date is, whether that's the date it's signed or whatever it says. Got it. Okay. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Anything else on daycares? Mobile homes? Mr. Markov?
Find my notes here. So does this mean that anyone can put a crappy-looking trailer next to a several-hundred-thousand-dollar home, million-dollar home up in Maplewood or any part of the town like that?
Yes, so long as it meets our definition for a mobile home, which I think has a date after which it has to have been built. But yes.
So it can't be a 1950.
Right.
It has to be a.
A newer constructed mobile home.
Yeah. We have not adopted standards, so that's kind of an example that Alex is stating. We haven't adopted standards that say you have to put it on a foundation, you have to have certain siding, et cetera. So there are design standards that could be adopted that, you know, we haven't reviewed and considered as a community.
Such as, don't want to skip ahead, not too much, but number 9, where minimum height and neighborhood conservation B. At Maple Ridge, if I'm saying that right, it's probably a conservation A. But those would be standards that you're talking about, so.
Yeah, so that would be one example. In neighborhood conservation B, primarily it's two-story and three-story buildings. And so we do have other zoning districts that are more dense in our downtown, where we have determined that there should be a minimum height to make sure that things have a consistent look along the street. And so that is what we're proposing here. 20 feet has typically been the minimum that our design standards have for other districts, so that might be an appropriate minimum for NCB, and so we are suggesting that, which would eliminate the ability for somebody to put a very short building, like you're stating, like a.
Because if you had a 50 by 100 vacant lot along Bates Street or someplace, you wouldn't be able to put a mobile home if you had to have it three stories high.
Exactly, exactly. So if we had a standard with a minimum height that was higher than the standard mobile home, then they would have to design something different to put in there.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
If I were going to have a mobile home company, that's what my brand name would be, Crappy Mobile Homes, but with a K.
Any other comments on mobile homes?
I'd like your thoughts.
We're going to go to number 6, which does have an LD reference to it. That's multiple, single, and two-family principal structures. Questions or comments from the board?
This is, this is an issue we've talked about before, especially around like deed, deed restrictions and stuff. So it's really great to see it on the list.
Yeah, we did talk about this a couple meetings ago, I think. And it's not essential that we do this at this time. It's not really connected to coming into compliance with an LD now. We will have to come into compliance with LD 1829 by next summer, and this will, you know, make it a little smoother to do that. But I think the board was already supportive of this idea generally, which is why we're bringing it forward now.
Walls and fences?
What was the other one I had notes on? So, thinking that the planning board should have this authority, why does staff get to dictate this? And what will be the criteria for passive failure under staff? And does an applicant have recourse back to the planning board?
So right now, fence permits are issued by code enforcement, not by the planning This change is being proposed because right now there is nothing for, right now, if somebody's property line is the edge of the street, which does rarely happen, there's nothing that allows us to not allow them to put a fence on the street. We actually had somebody come forward with that situation. And because the, like normally, the property line is setback aways from the streets, there's plenty of setback. And we don't have a requirement that you be off of your property line. You can put it right on the property line. So code enforcement, all they could say was, we highly recommend you don't put your fence there, you put it back a few feet because the snowplow is going to take it out this winter. But there was nothing to require them to set it back. So this would allow code enforcement in those odd situations to require the fence to be setback what they deem is appropriate based on the property situation.
When I read this, I noticed that the vocabulary was setback and not right-of-way, which means that you're taking the person's property rights away from them. That basically amounts to a taking. You have a problem with people's property lines because somebody made a mistake over the last hundred years, need to correct it, go through eminent domain, not dictate how people use their property when they have a right to the use of their property within the setback.
They could still plant or put shrubs or other things.
You're still dictating what they can and can't do, regardless of whether they can do certain things without interference.
duly noted. Can you make a note of that when you propose the language to us?
Of that concern, or how would you like the language?
Yep, of that concern. Based on everything I've heard here tonight, it would probably behoove you to bring forward some language that recognizes where eminent domain is and isn't used, and what other areas we might be enforcing use of property through setbacks. Are there other comments on walls and fences? Mr. Dupree?
Surely, on the fence issue that you just brought up.
You pull your mic up for me, Roger. Thanks.
What is the height of the fence from the road back as far as the abutting building is concerned, as far as seeing the road?
I'm sorry, were you asking about the height of the fence that's allowed?
Yeah, the height of the fence and how far back from the road before they can extend it to 6 or 10 feet.
I'm not familiar with that. Linda might know the answer. I want to say it's 3 and 1/2 feet high.
Yes.
Yeah. So 3 and 1/2 feet high along the road, and then.
Yeah, but how far back setback from the road?
I think the question is, what's the distance from the road that you can be before you're able to have a higher fence?
So it needs to be on your property, so it can be on your property line or further back, but it can't be in the right-of-way.
And that fence can be any height.
No, that's not what he's asking. He's asking how, if I've got a fence, okay, on, on the front of my house, and it's 3 and 1/2 feet, and I want to fence all the way back, how far from that fence on the side of the road to, do I have to go at 3 and 1/2 feet before I can go to 6 feet?
There's no, no one's saying it has to be 3 and 1/2 feet at the road. You can have a 6-foot fence at the road. 3 and 1/2 foot fence does not require a permit.
Oh, sorry, I misspoke. There's no requirement that the fence along the road be 3 and 1/2 feet. It can be higher. If it's 3 and 1/2 feet or shorter, you don't need a permit for the fence. If it's higher, then you need a permit.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be a safety issue as far as the abutters to that, that property?
It would be if the right-of-way is quite small or nonexistent, like a. It would be if the right-of-way is quite small or nonexistent, like a situation like this where the property line is basically the road edge. Which is another reason for allowing some discretion from code enforcement and requiring that people have that review.
Does the abutter have any recourse as far as limiting the height of that or far back, setback on that fence?
No.
Alex?
Just a quick note. I would love to see, because I could see this happening again. In the memo, it says front setback. It sounds like really the concern is any property line that abuts a street in that way. So like even if it was a side, we could still have the same problem of, hey, we, you know?
Yeah, and the way our definition is, all property lines that abut a road are a front setback.
Got it. So you can have, you could have a property-
You can have multiple fronts, yeah.
Wow.
You could even have three. If you've got a corner lot and a paper street, you could be lucky enough to have three. Yeah.
Sounds like something I should aspire to. Maybe I should move. Anyway.
Anything else on walls and fences? Downtown residential minimum lot size, number eight.
I think it's a great idea.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Markcott, can we go to number nine?
Yep.
Great. Number nine, minimum height requirement and neighborhood conservation B. Questions or comments from the board? It's going to be a whole new bulk table when we're all done.
I basically mentioned what I wanted to say in the previous one on this, but I'd like to highlight the words preserve the characteristic building pattern. I find it hard to believe that you maintain a characteristic building pattern with a lot of what's in LD 2003.
Minor land use chart update, number 10. Alex?
I would just have a question. Doesn't have, shouldn't be answered tonight, but what about other businesses that are similar to an automobile dealer, like, I don't know, ATVs or motorcycles or something like that? I wonder if there's language that could better fit, or if that's not the intention, then you could ignore this. But just something to think about for whatever language we get in the future.
John Deere Tractor Store, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Or Kubota. I mean, whatever. You're driving in your fields. I don't mean to be choosy.
New Holland.
That makes it through all 10. Were there any remaining kind of overall questions or comments from the board before I seek a motion? Then I would seek a motion.
I will make that motion. Make a motion to initiate amendments to Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code as summarized in this memo pursuant to Article 7, Planning Board, Section 4, Powers and Duties, and Article 17, Section 5, Amendments.
Second.
Thank you.
Can-
Can my associate second a motion but not vote?
I don't know.
Robert's Rules of Order.
We have a full slate.
I really like your energy. Is there any reason we can't accept a second from Zoe in this instance?
I'm not sure.
I believe Robert's Rules. I think we have a better parliamentarian in the room than I am, but I think Robert's Rules-
Requires someone who's voting for-
I'm happy to second on Zoe's behalf.
Thank you. Please note Alex as her second.
Thank you, Alex.
Still appreciate that energy, Zoe. Any further discussion?
I have a question about process. So how soon will this come to us? Is there a timeline on this coming back to us?
We expect to have it to before the end of the year. My hope is it will be the meeting in November on the 24th, but it might end up being in December.
And would it only come once? As in you wouldn't workshop it, you'd come with the proposed changes, would do public comment and act?
Yeah, we would advertise it and bring it as a public hearing. And if for some reason you weren't comfortable with moving it forward that night, then we would do another, you know, meeting.
Call the roll, please.
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markcott?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Groey?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Bun.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item B, another business. The planning board providing feedback on a new section in Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for a vacant building ordinance. Shelley, I think that you're proposing this. Do you want to queue it up?
I wrote the memo, but I believe John is going to talk to you about this.
Great.
Yeah, I don't want to read the memo verbatim. You guys have all seen it and read it. This is a request to receive your valuable input as a board. This is something that the staff has been talking about. We've been discussing similar ordinances in Sanford, in Bangor. We all saw what happened in Portland. This is not the same as Portland. And so with staff and administration, we've decided that it's time to bring something forward, and we value your input. And we wanted to, we wanted to beat our counterparts across the river to the punch, but they beat us. And so we figured we have a lot of property owners in, that have property in both cities, Auburn and Lewiston. So it would make sense to have a very similar ordinance with very similar language, with a similar layout, that they would be able to easily see on both sides, no matter which side of the river they own property. So we pretty much took Auburn's most recent ordinance for their vacant building and adopted it. Staff has been working on it and making it ours. Obviously, there's probably more to flesh out. But before we brought a product to the city council, we would like to run it by you guys, see what your thoughts and opinions were, and get that valuable input. So happy to answer any questions on it. Staff, Shelley and Craig and Dawson did most of the writing on it, so they could probably answer any of the writing technical questions. But happy to answer any, any questions as to the reasoning behind it, the thought process behind it, and what our goals are with it.
Thanks. I do have an overarching question myself, but I'd rather hear from anyone else before I jump in. Lucy, and then Roger.
I just have questions regarding the fees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I've got a building, and it's vacant. And so you're going to charge me every year that it's vacant? Or is that, yeah, it's every year?
Correct.
Okay.
If it doesn't fall within one of the exemptions. So if you, if you have a property where you're a snowbird and you're only occupying-
Yeah, no, no. I'm talking about, I've got a Darrell building on Knox Street that you were talking about at city council meeting the other day. You know, I mean, and so this guy's had these buildings for four years. So, you know, if it's now, you'd start charging him every year for X amount, you know, 400 bucks or whatever.
Correct. I believe there was also a carve-out for if they have a building permit, if they have an active building permit that they're working on. There would be an exception there as well. If it's for sale, if it's listed with a realtor, you would have 100, I believe it says 180 days.
Right.
So there are some exceptions for that. But yes, if you have a vacant building on Knox Street or whatever street in the city, and it doesn't fall within one of the exceptions, if it can be considered abandoned or vacant, then yes, there would be, there would be a fee every, I believe it's every six months-
Right.
-that you would pay for the permit for that. Yes.
Okay, but if I have an abandoned building, how the heck are you going to collect that 400 bucks every six months if I'm not, if I'm not fixing this building?
Well, most abandoned buildings, and the purpose behind this, a lot of this stemmed from, if you think back to '08, when a lot of the bank-owned properties were out there. So an abandoned building is usually going to have a mortgage on it. And so the holder of the mortgage would more than likely be liable in paying this fee for it. So, so it's not necessarily, you know, a vacated building is probably what you're thinking of. If the person doesn't have any money, they own the house outright, but it's now just vacant, and they move away from it and they're destitute or whatever. I can understand that. But for abandoned properties, where you're talking about mortgaged properties, you know, whoever has a, and it spells out on there, whoever has an interest in the property, whether that's the bank, you know, anybody who's got the loan, who's holding the note.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I have Mr. Markcott, Mr. Dupree, and then you, Mr. Pine, and then Ms. Smith.
Of course, the first note that I made was like Portland. You're telling me it's not like Portland? What's the distinction?
So Portland had a, I believe it was a commercial storefront specific. That's what they were primarily targeting, was vacant storefronts. And then if you, you could get away with it, I believe if you allowed the city to put artwork in your storefront windows, if I'm not mistaken. And if you don't start occupying it, then you start paying the fines. I believe that was theirs. This is, you know, this is geared towards, you know, right now residential properties, not like Portland's vacated downtown storefronts.
Sorry, just a clarifying point. So not for commercial properties and just residential?
I believe that's how it's currently written, correct, Shelley?
I don't know as to what's the case.
I know that Auburn is applying it to commercial.
Yeah.
I heard concerns today from folks in the commercial sector. So I think that it's being read as commercial as well.
And we have, we have discussed it as staff. In talking with Sanford, they started out with just starting with residential, then they moved it to commercial. And we had discussed it, and I just, it escapes me right now if we were jumping right to both or if we were going to start with residential.
Yeah, so I don't think we changed what Auburn did, and I believe that that doesn't distinguish between the two.
The pages aren't numbered, but in Section 18 to 35, Fees B is specific to commercial buildings, so I'm going to assume it does include.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thanks. Are you good?
I had more.
Is it, can I give you one more, and then we can hear from others and come back to you for anything else unanswered?
Sure.
Thanks. Did you have a second one yet at the ready?
Yeah. I was a little confused with the difference between abandoned and vacant, but my thought is, if somebody owns a piece of residential property, and it's safe, secure, no violations, all up to code, it's just empty, I don't think we should be charging fees just to create an income source. And it doesn't make it any more easy for the property owner to deal with the fact that, yeah, they have a non-performing piece of property, they don't have revenue for. But they're pleading more expense. Those properties are going to fall into disrepair even more likely because of the additional burden of taxed by another name. And I'll save the rest till it goes around.
Thanks. Mr. Dupree?
John, there's a house across the street from me on Church Street that's been abandoned and vacant for the last five years. Now it's condemned. How do you deal with that?
How will this deal with a condemned building? So we would still require, once this goes in, if this passes and it becomes an ordinance, then obviously we would try to get the property owner, whether that be the bank or whomever it may be, they would be required to get the permit. A condemnation doesn't alleviate the requirement for the permit.
Yeah, but there's been three transfers of the bank. Now it's a bank in Indiana that owns it. And when I was talking to Travis last year, he told me that because the bank is paying the taxes, there's nothing the city can do. Is that correct?
Is, in terms of, I mean, there's still a condemned building, so there's still requirements that they can't, you know, they can't occupy it. We would want them to fix it and get it repaired. But this ordinance speaks to exactly that scenario right now, where they would have to, they would have to pay a fee on that.
But why would they?
Why would they?
Yeah.
Because it's an ordinance, and if they don't, the repercussions are, we could take it as a dangerous building. We could enforce dangerous building activity on it. Obviously, it's condemned. And then we go through the legal channels as we would with any other dangerous building.
What's the timeframe on that? Why, is there a timeline that you would look at before you go after these people and say, all right, we're taking it by eminent domain?
Oh, not through eminent domain, through the dangerous building hearing with the city council. And those, I mean, those take, we just heard 54 Knox the other night. And so within 30 days, the owner has to either fix it or take it down, or have an agreement with the city, a legally binding agreement with the city, that they'll get it fixed. And if they don't, then the city will take it down.
Roger, I think your answer is on the very last page, under violations and penalties.
Yeah, but I'm still confused because the fact is that it's been abandoned and condemned for five years.
I've-
You know, it's continuing to deteriorate, and it doesn't seem like anything is being done, either to tear it down or have somebody buy it and refurbish it or do anything.
Well, if it meets the criteria of a dangerous building now, then Travis will bring that to my attention, and we could take it to the council as a dangerous building. If it doesn't meet the dangerous building requirements per state statute, then we would need something like this to force them to pay the fee. And eventually, over time, it's going to get to the point where the fee is too high for them to, you know, keep paying the fee. So the hope is that they actually invest in the property, get it back up to par, get it back, you know, into the hands of, you know, either a tenant or, you know, another property owner that wants to use it as an investment property.
Is there a way of checking to see if they're paying the fee?
Is there a way to check that they're paying the fee?
Mr. Dupree, are you asking a number of questions about enforcement?
Yes.
Is, is that something you can speak to more comprehensively? And is there a second version of this that will come in front of a public hearing, and maybe you could bring those answers to us then?
There'll be, there'll be another version of this. This is, yes, there'll be something else coming.
Would you like to hear more about enforcement when they present the language for public hearing, Roger?
Eventually, yes.
And just for clarification, since this is going in Chapter 18, it's not required that the planning board review this or have a public hearing. So the public hearing you're talking about is probably council, public hearing.
Thank you. But we will see this again? Not necessarily.
I don't believe the board. Now, we could bring it, once we have a final copy, we could, we could bring-
General wisdom, but not actual oversight, as you introduced earlier.
Correct.
Thanks. Okay. Mr. Pine?
Yeah. I just want to make sure my general understanding of why we're adopting this is correct, and then maybe also just sort of spelling it out for the record for anyone who watches this at home. It might be helpful. So my, my understanding is that we adopt ordinances like this because we want to motivate owners of property to do something with that property, whether that's divest in it, sell it, or renovate it, or, you know, in the case of a property that's perfectly fine just not being used, rent it out, just do something with it. So we don't have an empty building doing nothing, right? Buildings are tools. People should use the tool. And this is a way to encourage them to do that. Is that right? That's sort of the general idea here?
General idea, yes.
Okay. And my understanding is that this is a problem, often, you know, forgetting about, you know, one person owning a house someplace and not doing anything. But sort of on a larger commercial level, I've heard in other cities that there are commercial landowners who will like intentionally keep a building vacant because they can claim it as a loss. It sort of helps the overall financials for their portfolio of buildings, but it does have an impact in terms of, you know, tying up usable space in a tight market or, or just, you know, leading to problems in the city because you have a whole block that's unoccupied. Is that sort of part of this as well, or is that not?
It is to a degree, but the purpose is not to say what you do with your property. You know, the data shows, and I'll have to pull it up, and I can get it for you guys, but the data shows that vacant properties tend to require more resources from police, fire, and code enforcement. And, and we say, who, who should that fall on? Should that additional cost fall on all the other taxpayers around that property? Or should it fall on the property owner themselves, paying for these extra, you know, visits from code, and in any of the vagrancy, and any of the other things of blight that accompany a typical vacant building? So if you want to have a vacant building and have it as a write-off, that's fine, but you're going to have to pay the fee-
You pay for the service.
And you can keep it vacant. Now, you have to also maintain the same building standards and keep it up to par. But that's where the fee comes in, is to offset some of those additional costs that the city incurs by vacant buildings, just by the sheer nature of what happens with them.
Got it. And it sounds like, from reading through this, that we're looking at this from a building standpoint. So like, let's say you have, you know, a five-unit commercial building, I don't know, on Lisbon Street, I'm just going to make it up, and you have one office space rented out, and the rest of the building is vacant. This would not apply? Sort of generally, that's the idea?
Generally, as it's written, correct. You know, we've talked to some of the other communities, and they, they charge it by the unit. If you have a four-unit building and one's vacant, they want you to get a vacant building, you know, a unit-
Vacant unit permit.
Permit. But this is not written that way as it's currently written. It's the building.
And I'm assuming that's a carryover from Auburn?
I'm sorry?
And that's a carryover from Auburn's-
Correct. They, I believe there's talks about, was this 50,000 square feet is one fee, then anything over 50,000 square feet- then anything over fifty thousand square feet is an additional fee. So it talks about space that way in terms of the fee, but not, you know, if your first floor is occupied, but your second and third floors are vacant. You know, is it now a vacant building, or is it occupied?
Yeah.
These are some of the things that we're still going to be working on.
Yeah, I guess I do wonder about that, like, if you have a very large complex and like, you know, one little corner of it is well, you know, rented out for a fabrication shop, but it's this huge warehouse that's otherwise vacant, like, it probably still will suffer from some of the same issues that you're talking about in terms of the higher burden on city services. So I wonder about that, not advocating for anything, but it is an interesting question. I'd be curious about how other cities dealt with that.
Ms. Smith?
So I'm trying to frame my question. This is really hard for people who currently own property, really hard. So a lot of the units, a lot of the buildings on Lisbon Street with all those empty storefronts, this is going to do nothing to help develop that. Because people buy those properties, and then they get in, into the details of renovating them, and it's expensive, and it's going to take time, and it might take years. And so what this would do is, somebody who's trying to do a good thing with a currently vacant property suddenly has to pay all these extra expenses when they're struggling to just try to make the thing pencil out. So I don't understand, I don't understand the need for this. And from a timing perspective, in here it says, like, page three, item five, "Any vacant building, such exemption shall not apply if the building was required to be registered as a vacant building the first time it was offered for sale. Such exemption shall expire." So now you've got people who, now there's this new ordinance, and you own buildings that are going to take years to redevelop because it's so expensive to do it. And it's going to take months and months of site prep and months and months of presenting to the planning board. And they're getting penalized, even though they're trying to do the right thing, right? So this item that says you're going to, you've got exemption expiring eight hundred and eighty days after the building is offered for sale. When somebody offers a building for sale that qualifies as a vacant building, once that building is under contract, the buyer needs to understand whether or not it's going to be considered a vacant building and whether or not they're going to be incurring these fines right off the bat.
So, if I may, the, what you're describing would be the exception for number four. So if they purchased the building and they started developing it, and we understand developing takes a very long time, some permits, you have six months to start your permit, but once you start working on it, that building permit continues with the building. So if the building is under construction, then there would be an exception for it.
But I'm talking about before they acquire it. Is it a vacant building, am I acquiring a vacant building right now? And therefore, do these rules apply for me?
So if you're buying a vacant building, and there's a current licensed, you know, vacant building permit for that building, and then you purchase it, you would have to get, if you're going to keep it vacant, yes, you would have to get, you know, a new vacant building permit in your name as the new owner.
But from an enforcement standpoint, I have zero faith that all the vacant buildings in Lewiston are going to be registered as vacant buildings, and then the buyer will actually know that they're acquiring a vacant building according to the ordinances.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? I think I understand the intent behind your question, and if I'm understanding what's being proposed correctly, which I could be wrong, it's that the minute that you enter into a purchase and sale agreement, you will be either making a choice for it to remain vacant or for you to actively engage in that property. And if you're engaging in that property in any of these ways, whether it's reselling it, getting a permit, working on it, living in it, then it is no longer vacant.
Correct.
So this is more about the current owners choosing to activate the property or not?
Correct, but they also can choose to not register it as a vacant building, which most of them will do.
So we will be proactively looking, so let's just say that this goes into effect. There's numerous ways, it's going to be an undertaking to locate and identify all of the vacant buildings. But there's a myriad of ways, you know, through cross-referencing everything between utility bills, between CMP bills, between the assessor's office, the code enforcement officers going out and actively looking. So there's ways that we can cross-reference all of those items to find out if a building is being utilized or not, to find out if it's vacant. We would hope that owners, if this were to pass, were to come forward and say, yes, I have a vacant building, I'm going to keep it vacant, here's my application. Because I don't want to go through the repercussions of not applying for the vacant building permit. But code will be out actively trying to find and locate all of those vacant buildings, and it will be a process, there's no doubt about it. And we will have to annotate all of that in our database, in our system, that shows the building as being, having a vacant building permit. And every Realtor, just about every Realtor that's worth their salt in this city, before they list a building, they come into our office, and they pull the property file, and they want to see everything that's on that building. That vacant building permit will be in that property file once the code office knows about it and the application has been paid for, and the permit is in the file as part of the permanent record.
So I guess my fundamental question is, this seems like a very, very heavy lift for planning and code. Code, everything that you just described, tracking down owners, figuring out vacancy or not, making people pay when they haven't had to pay before, that is a tremendous use of city resources. I would much rather have those resources used on currently occupied buildings that are not compliant.
I understand. And we're working on those as well. We're trying as fast as we can, but it's, as you know.
But why add this to your plate right now?
We think, we believe that using the resources that we have, like I said, CMP has a list. The US Postal Service has a list of, you know, vacant buildings in their list that they don't send mail to. Cross-referencing all of those will be a data crunch, and it'll take some time. The biggest time suck, if you will, will be the code officers driving around and just identifying them on their own.
Which, to my point, why aren't the code officers?
Boys, guys, I apologize.
But to my point, why aren't the code officers driving around now and addressing the currently occupied buildings that are in obvious violation of many building codes just from the outside?
Well, they are, a lot of them are. And they, and to defend all of them, they drive around and they issue notices of violation on a daily basis to a lot of buildings in the downtown area, in the entire city for that matter. And so they're a team of five, they can't hit every building, unfortunately.
To my point, a team of five, I say focus on the occupied problem buildings first. That's just my two percent.
And that'll be carried over with the rest of our gems of wisdom to the council. Is there anyone we haven't heard from yet? Mr. Roy?
Personally, I like the ordinance. I don't see it as a problem. I actually see it as a good incentivization to get owners to actually occupy the building. I see, particularly for commercial buildings, and it's a cost of doing business if you want to. If you see it as having a commercial building as part of your portfolio and leaving it vacant is, oh, well, that's, you know, that's a good way for me to write it off, or however it's economically beneficial to you, well, this is now a, this is now a cost of doing business because there is ancillary costs to the city that we have to take on. And I think you should pay for that, so. I definitely agree with this. I don't see it as that, I don't see it as particularly burdensome. Maybe once it gets up to the sixteen times the base fee, but that's the point. Once it gets up to the sixteen times the base fee, yeah, time to move on, get something going. So for example, I know a lot of, I see a lot of buildings around town that have been vacant for decades, that I'm like, what? Who owns this building? And why is it vacant? I mean, I know, like, the Dominican block.
That's the one I was going to point out.
Who owns this building? It's a beautiful building. It's perfectly usable, or at least it looks perfectly usable. How can this possibly be vacant for at least since I've been alive? It's crazy.
Yeah.
Right? So I definitely see it as something that I think is useful.
I'd like to offer my thoughts, and then we'll come back to Mr. Marcott, if you still have some. So first, in the applicability section, I'd love if that was maybe named applicability and exceptions, since largely it is more about exceptions. And I think people will look for that. I would also note that that section is missing number two, it goes from one to three, for fun. My concern is with section five. And so this is about a vacant building. It creates an exception for something actively being marketed, which I appreciate. I think fundamentally, I agree with much of what Mr. Roy said. I think underneath all of this, this gives an incentive to people who buy properties cheap, hold them with no intention of renovating them, occupying them, activating those spaces, and then are the first to complain and use city resources to protect the spaces that they're not actively using. I've seen that both with commercial and residential over the years. I remember '08 and '09 and what it did to this town. And it gives the ability for the city to go after banks who have financial resources and zero incentive to do anything with a foreclosed property that they're holding, including marking it. And I know that because I bought a foreclosed home and had to engage with that bank, and that property had sat there vacant in a time when there's a housing crunch. My concern with number five, though, is it speaks just to buildings that are for sale. And so if we have a commercial property, let's say I'm one of those people I just described, I own a commercial spot right on Lisbon Street, for example, and I'm not choosing to sell it, nor am I choosing to rent it. Where does this ordinance speak to commercial properties that? Because this is about intention, right? Fundamentally, this is about intention. How does it speak to properties that are purchased and put into a portfolio, often for the notion of, I'm going to rent that commercial space, I'm going to rent that storefront? How does this fit into that?
As it's written, it doesn't. But that is the reason why we're bringing it to you and seeking that input.
I mean, I think even like actively a for-rent sign in the window for a place of which I'm not planning to sell it, and so exemption five doesn't count for me, right? But that it, there should be something that indicates my active engagement with trying to fill the building, if not sell it, and I think that's a point that's being missed, and I'd like to see that. I, sorry, everyone, but I really appreciated a lot of what Amy said, too. And I've seen the other side of this issue, where people with significant resources sit on properties, and it is wasting corners, it's all of the things that we've talked about in design principles and so many other spaces. I'd like to see the applicability or exceptions be related to those who are purchasing properties who have financial hardship and are actively engaging with the city. So this is kind of really black and white, and there is no clear process for somebody. I mean, I've worked with business owners who have spent many, many, many months engaging with code enforcement to find out towards the end of that line that there is something else that needs to be done. And so what does it look like? How could this ordinance address some of that gray area for folks who are, you know, bootstrapping a project, of which we want to actively see? I like that we're incentivizing people to not just hold it. But I'm not seeing where it speaks to folks who are actively trying to do something and could inadvertently get fined. One note, as I took some phone calls on this today, is specifically by letting our friends across the river implement this first, it means that the first fines have been levied, and people have been getting those complaints. Specifically, and maybe this is an improvement you made, and you can speak to it, but there are commercial property owners in Auburn who have the property listed, have been trying to actively sell it for months upon months, and are getting their first fine. And so when you look at the hundred and eighty days that you're naming in number five, I'm concerned, like, this is a great market for residential. This is a crap market for office commercial, and we haven't yet converted a lot of our commercial spaces post-pandemic to their future, whatever use it's going to be. And what does it look like for somebody who cannot rent, cannot sell their commercial space because there is a glut in the market, who's actively trying to do that to then make their financial situation worse? And so in this moment, I can see how most of this applies to our current residential, and we don't want vacant spots when we have folks who are unhoused and folks who need housing, and folks who want to move here and pay taxes and circulate their dollars in the local economy. What does it look like for us to recognize? I hear the intention, I don't see it applied consistently throughout. And I think if our friends across the river got the beat on us, we could learn from some of the mistakes that they're having in implementation and fine-tune this, so it speaks to that intention in a meaningful way.
Absolutely. I would ask, do you think there's a more appropriate timeline than the one hundred and eighty days?
I think it's in this market. So it's more like, are you listing it, have you done a price drop? Have you, like, what is the active ways that you are looking to either fill or sell your property? That speaks to intention, and I don't, I mean, if it's actively sold, then maybe the second six months doesn't count against them either. Because if you look at the residential market and if it tanked, then you've got a bunch of homeowners who are actively trying to downsize or get into a house that fits within their means, who are now also paying fines, and it's sat on the market for fourteen months.
Yep.
And it's been a decade since we've seen that. It's not that far in our recent memory. And so I just don't want to be part of crafting something that doesn't stand the test of time and doesn't speak to the true intention that I think is underneath this.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate all that.
Yeah. Mr. Marcott, and then Mr. Pine, and then Ms. Smith?
I want to thank Amy Smith for what she said. She encapsulated a lot of my views, I just couldn't put it into those words. But I think that staff's time would be better directed in what's on their plate now than to be seeking new items. We haven't seen much with development review this year. And that goes all into the economy and what makes it financially capable for people to live here and work here. I mean, they both go hand in hand, and it's difficult all the way around. As far as the Dominican block is concerned, I was there on the planning board, on the finance committee, the city council, when that all went through. The owner of that property is having some serious difficulty doing much with it because of the business model that he took on and the status of the city of Lewiston in general, which everybody who lives here understands. Probably don't want to talk to some of the language because it comes across offensively. But we do need to deal with certain things in this community to make it palpable to live here, to work here, and be financially stable if you do make a choice to come here to Lewiston. Extra fees, this smacks with the rental registration project that went on about five years ago, if I get the date time correct. So I appreciate what Amy said because some of the concepts that she shared fall in line with mine. Thank you.
Mr. Pine?
Yeah. No, I hear the frustration that sounds like has come up with Auburn's implementation of this. I think, in my mind, you know, when I'm sort of running through this, the challenge is like, how do we provide exceptions? You know, how do we sort of base a standard so that it isn't easy to sort of like game the system, right? Like, you know, oh, yes, I'm trying to actively rent it at a million dollars a square foot. You know, it's listed for, you know, years and years and years at a ridiculous price. But at the same time, you know, you don't want to punish someone who's like, yeah, I bought the property, and then I dug into it, and it's, you know, it's going to take a lot more than I thought, and so I'm trying to get bank investment, I'm trying to get these things, I'm trying to do this. I almost wonder, you know, because I think the intention is really around, like, are you doing things? Are you just like sitting on your hands, or are you actually doing something? So I almost wonder if there's a way to have a mechanism that's just like, hey, if it's for sale, you know, you're checking in once a quarter with city saying, you know, here's the sale update, you know, report, you know? Here's how many offers we got, you know, here's what we've done.
Similar to folks who are receiving unemployment benefits have to provide proof that they've made active efforts?
Yeah, or, you know, same thing with rental, you know? We've lowered the price yet again, we still have no takers. Here's the issues that we, you know, believe are the root cause, you know? We'd like to engage the city with economic development to fix this problem. Or, you know, just something like that. It does, I am worried to what Amy's saying, is like, this is a lot of work. This is going to be a lot of stuff. But I agree with Mark, like, I haven't lived here that long, but I've seen a lot of properties that are like, that's a cool building, you know? But nothing seems to be happening here, or it's not even that cool of a building. It's just a warehouse in my neighborhood. And it seems to be just like sitting around, and I know people want small warehouse space. And it seems to be just like sitting around, and I know people want small warehouse space. I've heard that. So, um, yeah. But I don't think we're the first people to tread here. Uh, I think it would be interesting to maybe look outside the state to see if there's stuff. Again, I know staff time is limited, but I know other communities across the U.S. have done this.
Specifically in Maine, and if you'll pardon me, just briefly, of the folks I heard from today, the ordinances in Bitterford and Brunswick, which were not two of the cities listed in the memo, have similar vacant building that are more acceptable to folks engaged in the commercial sector. So if you're looking for a solution like of what could be done, um, there are two in Maine, and I think those are peer communities that you've worked with in other ordinances.
You said Brunswick and?
Bitterford.
Bitterford?
Yep. Ms. Smith?
So just three additional comments. The first is, I do agree with Alex and Shannon regarding it, there have to be exceptions for people who are trying, right? I think that's key to this, to being successful for Lewiston. The second thing is, it's a huge missed opportunity if you do something like this and you don't also include all the housing above the commercial storefront. So you can't just buy a building and make the storefront active without developing the housing upstairs, okay? There's so much wasted housing in this city because it's sitting on top of storefronts, and it's totally fine for people to just do something like the bare minimum often with the storefront and leave all this housing undeveloped. So that's a missed opportunity.
That's like a unit thing, right?
That's a unit thing. Or it's just, if it's a mixed use building, you got to do both.
I do wonder, you were speaking, Mr. Connor, about, um, trying to kind of parse out how properties that have multiple tenants or multiple uses. And I do wonder, for whatever multiple use is, that it's actively being engaged for each of the uses as maybe a way to, to resolve it. I think about some of the work we did on, on first floor residential, and if the way to make your building's financials work is convert that storefront to residential, and then you've got an entire building that could have a financial model that works, then get after it, I say. I do appreciate the incentive behind it.
And item number three, related to the rental registry, when we crafted that, uh, ordinance, the emergency contact information for every single rental property that's registered is supposed to be public. It is not public. That never happened. It's impossible to get that information. And in here, it says that a vacant property registry maintained by the city which shall be made available for public inspection. How, when, what will that cost? Who's implementing that?
I'm sorry, which number? You, you had talked about the rental registration. That was, uh, section eighteen, two, three, three, number, uh, letter C, number three, correct?
D.
And then what was the next one? D?
D. After, right. After the vacant building registration permit is issued, the director of planning and code or the designee add, will add the property to a vacant property registry maintained by the city which shall be made available for public inspection. That was also promised in the rental registry, never happened. Impossible to find who's responsible for a rental property that's derelict. And now we're promising it again for vacant buildings, which are going to be even more difficult to track down and get contact information.
Point of information?
Sure.
That was also supposed to be electronically available.
Correct.
I, I would add to that particularly because we're specifically speaking about vacant buildings, abandoned buildings, and bank-owned buildings. Not only do you need to know who owns it, but you should have the point of contact locally who's responsible for care, whether that's the real estate agent or a property management company. I'd require both.
Which is all in the rental registry and has never been made public in any form.
Sounds like alignment with the rental registry makes good sense. And then actually delivering on public inspection is also a request I'm hearing. Is there other comments on this from the board for our friends at city council to hear?
Oh, I did have one question. Well, a question in the comment. So when we're talking about a vacant building, are we talking about the entire building has to be vacant? Or is it just, for example, just, let's say, just the bottom, let's say, the storefront, even though the, um, let's say, the residential apartments above are not vacant?
Yes. So, so again, that was, that's what we were kind of talking about earlier is, you know, how, some of the things that we still want to flesh out is, you know, is a, is the first floor of a warehouse building, an old mill that's being used as a warehouse, the entire first floor is, is occupied and being used, but the second and third floor are completely vacant. Do we, do we say that's a vacant building or not? Is it a percentage? If, if a percentage of the building is used, does that equate to, um, you know, not being a vacant building? So these are some of the things that we're looking at. But if you're talking about, you know, multiple, a multiple unit building, do we, do we incorporate a, a unit, a vacant unit permit? And so those are, these are valuable, uh, little tidbits that you guys are giving us.
Okay. And then the only other thing I was going to say was, or at least highlight is, you know, to get to the sixteen times the base fee, I mean, if it's being charged every six months, that's eight years. If you can't, if you can't get your act together in eight years, perhaps you really shouldn't be, you know, in business, right? I mean, you're not, you're not particularly good at what you're doing, right?
Right.
In any case, that's just my comment.
On that front, if I can just follow up. I did like, let's take, for example, the Continental Mill as a really like, as we, as this is aimed to incentivize hopefully development and commercial or residential activity, um, if this were in place a year ago, when the Continental Mill had the front spot leased and started construction or turnkey even, and we were hearing developmental applications for the remainder of which is happening in phases, and it's not quite started yet, six months in, would they be paying a fee for that even though they're actively engaged in the development of that property?
So the way it's written, yes, they would. Unless there's a permit, unless they're active in the development, if they've come before with an application to the planning board, then we could use that at our discretion to say they are actively developing the property.
So then I, I wonder, because a lot of this language is tied, tied to building permits, of which they don't get one yet. And so I wonder if there's a way that you can speak to your intention by being thoughtful about the language choice there.
Absolutely.
With an, with an active application under review and/or a building permit issued instead of, because I think about those really big projects, particularly when we're looking at mills, and it takes years to put together that finance package and get all of your contractors in line. And I would hate for this to inadvertently disincentivize development of those properties.
Yep. No, I completely agree.
Ms. Smith?
One more, second to last page, um, item C. After a vacant building or abandoned building has been inspected, and if the director of planning and code determine that the vacant or abandoned building does not meet one or more building fire prevention or life safety codes, you must, you shall issue a work order for any work needed to bring the building and property into compliance with all applicable building, fire prevention, and life safety codes and ordinance requirements. So now I have a building that I'm losing my shirt on. I'm trying to figure out how to develop it. And now you're telling me I have to put in life safety and bring the whole thing up to compliance? That's what that says. Does the power have to be on? Do I need smokes and CO2s? What, to what level does it need to be brought into compliance?
So if you're building, I, I apologize, Amy, I'm not following you in the section that you were given.
Second to last page.
Did you say two, two thirty-six?
Second to last page.
Two thirty-six, section C.
Section C.
Then I heard her speaking to one A, B, two.
C, yeah, this numbering is weird. C.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, so for an example in today's world, if we had a building that was currently not up to code, it was a four-story building, a four-unit apartment building, and it didn't have sprinklers, but for whatever reason, the building was condemned, um, you name the reason, but the city had to come and condemn the entire building. In order to come out of condemnation, the building has to be brought up to current codes. And so at that point in time, that building owner would now have to come into full compliance. Now, if that means the building needs to be sprinkled now, then so be it. Then yes, that, that's, that happens now with the condemnations. So this is mirroring that. So if you had a vacant building, and for whatever reason it was condemned, and to bring it back out of condemnation, you have to bring it up to full codes for that particular use, it's, it's no different than what we're doing right now. So yes, that is, that is accurate.
But that, but this is not a condemned building. This is just a vacant building.
Right.
It's been vacant for forty years. It's all boarded up, it's not causing any kind of a safety hazard, and now I need to go in without knowing what its long-term use is going to be and install meat code? Like what code? What level of code?
The code for the use of whatever the building, whatever the use of the building's going to be.
We don't, you don't know yet.
But you're talking about after bringing it out of, so you're bringing it out of the vacant building, is that correct? Because that's what C is talking.
I'm saying that you're, you're saying that you're going to, you're going to inspect the vacant building, and then you're going to say, this is a vacant building, and now you have to bring it up to code.
Correct. As it's written, that is correct.
Yeah. Not, not okay. That's impossible. That's, you're just going to lose even more money. I don't get that.
You walk away from it.
So then everybody's going to walk away from it.
Exactly.
And then it's just going to be vacant. And there's zero incentive for me as a vacant building owner to come to the city and say, hey, guess what? I've got a vacant building. Would you inspect it and then please require me to pay all this money to bring it up to code?
So if you have a vacant building that's just sitting there.
Yep.
And you now want to develop it and turn it into something, you are going to have to bring it up to current codes when you develop it.
When you develop it.
When you develop it.
That's not what this says.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying outside of this, if you have a vacant building right now and with today's codes, and you decided that you want to turn it into a manufacturing plant of some sort.
Yep.
You will have to bring that building up to current codes. This is just expediting the process. If, if you have a vacant building and now you need to bring it up to code, it is expediting that process. You will have to bring it up to code regardless unless you let it sit vacant in perpetuity, and we are trying to alleviate people holding on to the buildings and keeping them vacant in perpetuity.
Right. But which code? Is a vacant building, you don't know what it's going to be? Do you have to bring it up to what it would be if it was just going to be a warehouse? You certainly don't want to bring it up to what it would be to be a daycare because you don't know what's going in there. What level of code compliance are you going to require for vacant buildings? Because even by saying that you have to have a fire suppression or, sorry, um, a fire system, um, now you're saying that the power has to be on. For example.
Right.
Maybe you don't have a meter. So now you're going to CMP, and now you're going to incur a monthly charge from CMP for a vacant building where nothing's going on.
And, and these are, these are great things to, to be pointed out, that we can go back and look at and, and try to come up with better language that, that speaks to these nuances of, of the, a vacant, uh, vacant building. Yep.
It would be great to speak with people who own vacant buildings now, who are responsible developers, like Tom Platts, who has mill buildings and all sorts of stuff that's around, and how would he feel about this? Or other developers who are trying to do the right thing. Because you don't want to penalize people who will eventually do a good thing with a building.
Yep. Okay.
Anything further from the board? Hey. Item C, staff report out on ordinance background on landscaping requirements for the design district and the zoning and land use code, article thirteen, and refresh my memory, Craig. We asked you to bring us this after our last meeting. And so just a reminder for all of us that we're here because we asked you to, and thanks for the follow-up.
Happy to do so.
Can I make a point? Excuse me. Paragraph number three. Are the shrubs supposed to be twenty-four feet or twenty-four inches tall? I think twenty-four feet's a little bit tall.
Be impressive, but twenty-four inches, that's right.
So, you know, typo, please make that.
Noted for the record.
Okay.
Craig, will you introduce this for us?
Uh, I can. I will let the memo do most of the talking today.
Always appreciate it.
And I'm happy to address any questions you have, you know, follow-up questions. As you mentioned, we were asked to look into this further after the conversation on the last development review project. What we were able to find, uh, there are essentially three parts of the ordinance, three sections of the ordinance that are applicable here. We've got article thirteen, section four Q, that's landscaping, that's on the front page here. That's the full current ordinance in the development review, um, section. There's also the design district standards, and then there is also article thirteen, section six, which links them together. So for any project that has development review, uh, they're required to meet certain landscaping requirements, or sorry, landscaping guidelines that are in the guidelines. These, uh, standards have been, uh, you know, basically linked together for the last about twen- since about 2020. Prior to that, they were still in existence, just in a different form. So the article thirteen, section four Q, um, was a more bridged version than you're seeing currently. The design district standards, um, those have been in existence for, as far as we're aware, since about the eighties. And those were, um, again, in 2020, were, were modified, um, to be more specific in certain cases and to be, uh, more lenient in certain cases as well. In, in sum, what we were able to find is, and I'll just direct you to the very last paragraph, um, practical changes from, uh, prior to 2020 and, and after 2020 is that prior to 2020, street trees were previously required to be thirty to fifty feet on center. Now we're asking for twenty-five to fifty feet. Uh, street trees were previously required to be a minimum height of fourteen feet, uh, as opposed to the current requirement of eight feet. And, um, still had to be two and a half inch caliber at, at a minimum. And then, uh, shrub, the requirement for shrubs was, was clarified post 2020. In a nutshell, those are the, um, those are the major changes that we were able to find. It's not apples, it's a little bit apples and oranges since, um, the prior 2020 guidelines were structured differently and, you know, they're, they looked, they looked at different. And so, but again, happy to answer any, any questions if there are any follow-up, follow-up questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hi, Zoe.
I'm wondering if it mentions anywhere where you measure that two and a half inch caliper? Just coming from the forester here.
Because they taper. Right?
Yeah.
Uh, it's a good question.
Usually that would be at four and a half feet from ground level, but.
And that may well be referenced somewhere in, but I, I wasn't able to pinpoint that.
Yeah. Just, just curious, because, you know, you could measure it at any point and it would be.
I know that we reference four and a half feet in shoreline zoning.
Yeah.
I would assume we're, we're going to, we're consistent with that, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
We can look, and if it's not in there, that could be a change that we add to the housekeeping possibly.
That would be good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I got one.
Mr. Pine?
Maybe a question for, for Zoe here. Is, is there something magical about a two and a half inch caliper tree? Like, and what, like, why, why that size? So the reason I ask is there's like a stormwater program for the city where if you plant a tree, you can get discount on your stormwater fee if it's a certain caliper size. And when I went to look at trees, it was like really hard to find a tree that was that big, that would sort of fit that spot, spot in the yard. And so, and like, I've also heard too that, you know, a bigger tree, if you have the root ball, you know, scrunched up, it's like less likely to survive. And I don't think the intention here is to have people plant a bunch of trees that'll die in a year. Is there something, do, like?
These two and a half inch caliber trees would have theoretically thirty to fifty feet of breathing room because of the scale of the properties of which this is applied to?
Sure.
I, I mean, I, you can answer, I also have some comments on that.
I mean, the thing that I would say is that it probably will just, it's like bigger, so it will survive better when it's transplanted. But I would be surprised if there was a tree that was only eight feet tall, but also two and a half inches in caliper, that would be a pretty fat, short tree.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the caliper size and how high it is varies from species to species, right? So depending upon the species, a two and a half inch caliper tree, four and a half and a half, four and a half feet from the ground, you know, you've got some slower growing things that might be shorter and they might have a larger trunk and, you know, the others too, the other direction. It's pretty much an industry standard like a two and a half inch caliper tree for any specifications for street trees. You want something tall enough that when they limb it up like a, you know, a third to half of the limbs, you still have something on top of it. That way people can see with cars so they can actually have visibility. And you want it high enough that if people do vandalize it, they didn't just snap the thing off. It needs to have some size and some, you know, girth to it so that it's not as easy to just, you know, destroy it by like the average person walking down the street. So I think that's typically why we're looking for something that's a bit bigger as a street tree.
Thanks.
Cool.
I really appreciate the follow-up and the research that went into this. I especially appreciated the paragraph that reminded us when and how and why we can offer a waiver and that we can still retain that right without having to revisit all of the code. There are very few places I can imagine that I would want to encourage a waiver from our board and yet there are a few and I appreciate that you paid attention to that in this memo. Thanks. Okay. Staff report out on clarification of the recommendation process for property disposition and acquisitions. This is another item of follow-up, thank you for that. Shelley?
Yeah, sure. So essentially what we found when we looked into this was that for acquisitions, there really isn't guidance for how you make a decision as to whether you recommend or don't recommend an acquisition. There's just a requirement that you have input and provide it. Then when it comes to disposition, we included the disposition policy on here as a attachment. There is also, I was a little surprised when I looked at this in more detail. While there are some standards that can be used, they are not for all dispositions, right? So the standards that were provided were specific to substandard lots that were not tax-acquired. When we look at potentially buildable lots or properties that were tax-acquired, it's a different section of the disposition policy and so you don't necessarily need to use that guidance. And I think when, when I looked at it, my understanding of that was the reason you're going through these factors and looking at them is to really make a decision and it's almost like this is what city administration is doing because that's the section, is in determining whether to offer for sale a property that is essentially not buildable. These would be the things you'd look at to consider whether you should sell it. So it doesn't provide a lot of guidance from what I can tell for you as a board making a recommendation on a disposition either. If you wanna use this criteria, there's nothing stopping you from using that. But it isn't clear to me that that's a criteria you're being directed to use. And then finally, there were questions people had about what council is required to do with your recommendation. There is nothing that specifies that they can't go against your recommendation or that they need a super majority to override it. So it's really a recommendation that they take into consideration in, in their process, but it doesn't have to, you know, color their action.
Thanks. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Mercant?
I recognize some of those last pages is something that the finance committee regularly delved into, you know, the requirements of the finance committee, at least the format seems to be the same. And it has changed over the years. I remember it changing immediately after leaving the city council in the fall of 2019 or the winter of 2019. Quickly looking through the document, trying to find a comment that if it's in the best interest of the city, which the finance committee had used on a few occasions, only to be overridden by the city council. So I guess the city council does have the ultimate right privilege there. But what determines the best interests of the community, sometimes I think when it comes to the planning board's role in these, we're the keepers of the comp plan. Council's not the keepers of the comp plan, staff's not the keepers of the comp plan, we are. And what determines the best avenue or direction for the community goes through that deliberative process at this body. And I, I think there should be more weight given to what comes out of the planning board. And when it comes to financial situations and that was the filter that was used over the years, as well as in the financial best interest of the committee, should be given a little more weight too. Now, there's something in here and I, I can't find it and pinpoint it, but duties assigned to it by general law and by ordinance. Can you define general law?
Can you point out where in the policy you're speaking?
I'm not sure where, might be something labeled C.
I see lots of numbers and no letters.
Maybe that was C as in other business. But, but anyway, I don't need that answer tonight. I, I was just curious, by duties, I assume it's the planning board, assigned to it by general law. Oh, wait a minute. Charter portion, Bill of Delve needs a reasonable thing. I suspect that C is in there somewhere. Section 405, planning board appointment, there shall be a planning board consisting of seven members, each of whom shall be qualified voter of the city of Lewiston and who shall be appointed by the mayor confirmed by the city council. No more than two members may reside in the same ward. All members shall be appointed for three-year terms. There shall be in addition to the seven members of the board, two associate members of the board, each of whom shall be qualified voter of the city of Lewiston, appointed by the mayor. Associate members are subject to the same board residency requirements as regular members. They shall serve for three-year staggered terms and associate members shall serve in the place of the member who is absent, disqualified or otherwise unable to participate when designed, designated by the chairperson to do so. B, there we go, compensation. Each member shall receive compensation at the rate established by ordinance by the city council. C, duties, here it is. Now, the planning board shall carry out those duties assigned to it by general law. A little curious as to what that specifically means. And by ordinance, apparently from my first read last Wednesday or something, then I heard it again tonight, that certain ordinances, basically zoning and land use code, direct me if I'm wrong, is the purview of the planning board where other ordinances like Section 18 referenced earlier is not. A rhetorical question mostly. The planning board shall.
Sorry, you asked a question about general law, is that state law? Is, like, for example, in the first agenda item that we picked up tonight, we're required to be applicable to state law when we're not able to reference.
I, I suspect that general law, I just need a definition. I suspect it probably refers to some sort of overarching state statute or, or, not up on all my legal terms on different categories.
I think it'd be any law in the book, not that I would hope they'd expect us to be familiar with like federal law.
It, it is municipal laws that have been handed down basically from state statute.
From state statute.
Just felt like one of those questions, we could get you an answer for.
And I'll have to read the same thing again, and by ordinance. Rules of procedure, we have something else on that. Planning board shall adopt appropriate rules of procedure consistent with the provisions of the charter to enable it to carry out its functions effective, da-da-da-da-da. Planning board shall adopt appropriate rules of procedure consistent with the provisions of the charter, that's recent.
Are you reading from the materials we were provided tonight or is?
No, this is some notes.
Yeah, was there a specific reference to this agenda item?
Well, yeah. And I was hoping that both C and D were mentioned in the, in the charter, charter portion, but somewhere, these acquisitions and dispositions that I'm familiar with are for three years. And reflecting on three years, that seems like a lengthy period of time and should be considered to be less because a lot of things happen in three years or don't happen that shouldn't be happening. Three years seems a little open-ended. That's not the language I was trying to drive to.
Were you referencing our term length?
No.
No, no.
He's referencing how long your recommendation is good for, before we'd have to come back for another one for disposition or acquisition of a particular property.
Thank you.
Yeah, because a lot of times the acquisition or disposition request comes to us, we grant it three years later and I've been around long enough to see it come back to us on many occasions. Nothing ever happens. I need to take a little more ownership in where we're going with that when the request goes out.
Anything else?
That's it.
I'd like to draw everyone's attention to Section 5.2.1, which is all tax-acquired properties. And given that we've been educated on this tonight, we now know the answer to what has to be done, both with the property that was required by tax and any surplus from the sale. And I hope that we can reference this at any future opportunities. It's there.
I have a question. You'll, wait for it. John will know what I'm talking about.
Could you just move the microphone closer to your mouthpiece?
The director will know what I'm talking about. There's a piece of property in Lewiston that recently was tax-acquired and sold for a nice, pretty sum. And my understanding is that it does exceed what the city has into it. Has, is this or has this made its way back to the heirs of the estate?
That sounds like an item you could offline and ask about a specific property.
Yeah, I don't wanna say who the property is on.
Then we should not talk about it during a public meeting.
Yeah.
As it'll be recorded.
Right.
So that seems like a specific point of inquiry for later? For the property reference?
Well, I wanna make sure that if state law is requiring this, that it's applied and applied across the board, whether it's the property I'm familiar with or any other property that I'm not familiar with.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Just one question on, oh, sorry. On property disposition, the attachment, there's 1.0 perfect, purpose 2.0 policy, says that is in the best interest of the city to respond in a timely fashion to requests from private party parties seeking to purchase or lease such property. What does the city perceive as timely?
Our department doesn't really handle this, so I'm not sure I have an answer for that. That would be more of an administration question.
Is timely different in different departments? Perhaps, right?
Yeah, and I don't know when it comes to property, how that's handled. I mean, administration needs to make a decision that something is surplus and that they want to sell it and I can't speak to them on that.
Part of that timely process includes us.
Potentially. They make that decision first before they would send it to the finance committee if it's under their purview and to the planning board, which it's always under your purview.
Mr. Pine?
Just a quick comment to timely. I bet you there is a court case that defines what timely is for a municipality. Like, it, I was talking with a friend who's a lawyer who's sort of does this type of stuff and he, like, this strikes me as a, a word where there is maybe a generally accepted idea of what timely is. So maybe we could get that. For this specific memo, I think I brought it up the last time we were talking about this, in that, you know, our job is to provide a recommendation, I think. Mark, you made a really compelling case that given the information that we're provided, it's kind of just like a rubber stamp, right? We're not, we're not doing a whole lot with these, right? Yeah, yeah. And I, and I think that's often the case. It's just like, oh, here's an address, okay.
Actually, just sorry, and I would hope that you would respond if we, if we were mischaracterizing it, but I actually remember your comments being about what felt like the uselessness of a recommendation in general because of the first item on the last page of the meadow that reads, "The final decision to accept a bid proposal or offer to purchase a city-owned property must be made by the council." So I actually don't, I don't recall his comments being about anything other than why do we debate it when there is nothing required for them to review it?
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I guess I thought more about this and I think I brought this up as well. Like, it seems to me that like the intention for us providing a recommendation, like the intention behind this whole process is that we're the keepers of the comp plan like Michael was saying. And that right now, the way we're doing this, there isn't a whole lot of utility to our recommendation because we're not looking at the properties in that lens. Like, at least I feel like as a planning board member, I don't have enough information that's coming out of administration to sort of tie it into the comp plan in any way. I mean, you know, last time we ended up looking through, you know, some of the history on the properties, you know, is it a developable lot? Does it have enough frontage, things like that? And I feel like if we continue doing this, which I think we will, you know, unless there's a change to the charter, it would be great to like actually try to get some utility out of the process rather than just rubber stamp it, you know, like actually make it a worthwhile thing. Or, or, yeah, we could.
I would encourage the board to do that at every single time they were asked to act in any way first. Second, there have been times in my service on this board and I looked to some of the other old timers on the board, I remember a number of discussions where our recommendation included points relative to new fire stations being built and our recommendation in alignment with the best use of properties in the needs of the city that we were advised to, usually through the capital improvement plan process. And so we have done that before as a board and I would hope that we are not rubber stamping. And we're compelled to do that. I think, I would say it's our responsibility each and every time. And so I think the thing that sticks out to me about what you said, Mr. Pine, is the fact that we would be better and able to do that if we understood clearly the priorities of the administration or council from time to time.
Sure.
Other discussion points, Zoe?
Just looking at that Section 5.2.1 that you had drawn our attention to, Shauna, I am wondering about a potential typo or like omission of a word in that, that just, the first sentence is not making sense to me. It looks like it should be, "Properties that were foreclosed on will be sold by a real estate broker licensed under state of Maine, et cetera, et cetera, who does not hold an elected or appointed office in the municipality and is not employed by the municipality," period. This real estate broker must sell the property. It's like it's two sentences kind of like meshed together in a way that doesn't make.
Good at that stuff, Zoe.
Sense.
Yeah, thank you.
I read it a bunch of times and I was like, am I missing something? But maybe it's just the sentence.
Yeah, it's a very long parenthetical.
Yeah. Anything else from the board on this agenda item? We're gonna give staff a minute to go through their discussion. We're gonna go to item E, customer service. As we have no memo and this was brought up tonight with adjustments to agenda, Amy, I would ask that you offer some context about this agenda item.
Sure. I'm not sure how to initiate a conversation upon, about customer service, timely service, having the city be easy and reliable to work with. So I just wanted to say that it is becoming a real barrier to people getting things done in the city. Unanswered emails, unanswered phone calls, permit applications that are submitted and linger for weeks without response. And I really don't know what the answer is, but in Auburn, they have somebody whose job is customer service for all the public-facing things that happen. And it's been really tough to try to get anything done personally and in speaking with other people who are just so frustrated with not being able to get consistent answers, straight answers, timely answers. As a planning board, our job is to make sure the comp plan happens and that people can do things in this city that they wanna get done. So I'm personally at a loss and just wanted to raise it with this group and understand how to move the needle on this as a city.
If I might. I would bring some historical context to the board or at least for any of the newer members of the board. This is a primary issue of concern with the council prior to our current sitting council. This came up a number of times and led even to joint conversations between planning board and city council. And so there's some history behind this particular issue. The second thing, and I guess this is a clarifying question first for Amy and then for staff and their response, is I'm hearing you know issues of concern specifically with permitting, but are there other departments or is it specific to code and planning that you're both experiencing and hearing those things? Just so that we can think about, because I have heard similar, just for what it's worth, I have heard similar things from a number of folks in the business community and, and in the nonprofit community. And those comments, I don't, the ones that I've heard concerns from, I don't think your department. the ones that I've heard concerns from, I don't think your department could handle single-handedly. And I think, um, some of the examples are when a decision, perhaps by code and planning, requires input from public works or from public safety, and there is, uh, in addition to the number of items that, that Amy listed, I hear a lack of clarity in their response, and that sometimes that lack of clarity or vagueness is referenced for further clarity at a future point down the line that adds holding costs for people. Um, and so I've seen that from nonprofits struggling with event timelines and organizing events in the community that's held by a completely different department than the one that you're responsible for. And so, um, I'm looking for Amy to both contextualize this in terms of the expectation of how this is addressed, and whether it's simply your department. Um, and I am offering my own input to this being an issue in consistency. And for most people who aren't sitting on a board or engaged in the city in the way many of us are, most folks just reference anything in any floor, in any department, in city hall, as the city. Uh, and I think that that is not serving our community well, and it's not serving the departments that are doing it well.
I, I would also ask for some clarity or some specificity, rather than, uh, dealing with the, the, um, the, the generalities. And, and I tell every developer, I tell every landowner, property owner, taxpayer in the city the same thing, that if, if there is an issue, please, please call. Uh, my, I welcome everybody into my office to have a conversation about any of the hard things that are taking place, that you, if, if anybody feels slighted or wronged, or don't feel like they're getting traction with my department, as you said, I can only deal with the folks that are, that are on the third floor that work for me. If, if, if permits are not going through, um, uh, I'm a phone call away, and I, and I usually try to get them done right away. Uh, in this particular instance, um, if, if you're referring to the email that went out this morning, um, I checked through my emails, and I haven't seen any other email, uh, from you relating to this, so I don't know if I was included in, in previous emails, um, or if you're just speaking to the, the permit process itself, uh, in which case today was the first time that I, that I've heard of this. So I apologize if you, uh, don't feel like you're getting the customer service that, that's due to everybody in the city. Um, but once I received it, um, I, I started looking into it, and, and I'm happy to help any way we can.
Sure, and, but it goes beyond that, John, and I really do appreciate that. And I know that I can call you, but other people don't know that you can call, they can call you. And just a couple days ago, I called about putting in a temporary handicap accessible ramp into a first-floor unit, and the person that answered the phone said, "You will need architectural drawings, and you will need to bring the entire unit up to ADA compliance if you're adding a temporary ramp for your tenant who became disabled."
And, and if I recall, that conversation, that, that's the, the default, right? That's the default, because that's standard for, you know, for just about every addition to a property. But if I recall, the, the building inspector did say that that was not required because it was temporary, correct?
Correct, but I had to ask the person who answered the phone and gave me that bad information twice to let me please speak to a code enforcement officer. So other people would have just given up and said, "I'm not gonna put in a ramp for my disabled tenant." So, again, this is, this is a real issue for the city. The city is very difficult to work with, especially if you're new to the city, and I'm not new to the city, and I'm struggling every day.
So any other comments from the rest of the board on this agenda item? Mr. Pine, and then Mr. Markot, and then Mr. Dupree?
Yeah, um, I've definitely talked with planning and code enforcement before on personal projects. And I've also, you know, worked with the city for events and things like that. And I would say, um, you know, it sounds like this discussion is sort of around larger culture at, you know, sort of workplace culture at the city. Uh, and I think, you know, like this ADA ramp maybe is a good example of sort of the, I think, often there's, there's sort of a reliance on like, well, let's just look at the rules, and just like, here's the rules, we're good. And maybe what people are seeking is more help with like, okay, what do you want to do? How can we get you there? More of a problem-solving thing, you know, this isn't a, a code enforcement thing, but I've, like, talked with staff in various departments at the city about an event I wanted to hold, and like, "Oh, I have this aspiration for, you know, closing a street for this event. You know, right now, we, you know, don't do that, but it's something I want to look forward to." And I was, I, I think I was verbatim told, "Oh, you could never afford that." I think that was the actual line, which, you know, i- i- I think there are other ways that you can say that, right? You can say that in like a-
It's possible, and here's what's the cost.
It's very expensive, but here, I can get you the cost if you're interested, you know, it's in the $10,000 range, $20,000, you know. Here, here, here's a ballpark, I'll let you decide, you know, but instead I was sort of told like, no, 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 you, yeah, this is above your pay grade. And I think, um, I would say, you know, even within planning and code enforcement, when I've brought projects, I think I, I was bringing sort of an odd project I often do, and it was sort of like, ah, you know, there was a willingness to try and figure it out, but also, like, we had to go through a couple of, a couple of moments of panic of like, "Well, it's not in the rules, dah, what do we do?" You know? Um, and, but the, the fact that I've seen that sort of across departments, right? It isn't just one department, I think speaks to maybe, I don't know what it is, but there's just sort of a cultural thing that has pushed people to feel like that's how they have to operate. And again, you know, appreciate that you're bringing up that, you know, you're here to, here to listen, uh, John. But to Amy's point, I think, yeah, people who don't know how to navigate a system, they're just gonna be like, well, oh, well, I guess I can't do it. Or, well, I guess I'm not gonna talk to the city about it, and I'm just gonna do it illegally, you know? And that's just not a great situation. So, yeah, I think overall, the, the sort of like shifting, shifting the culture to be one of like, if you're coming to me with a problem, like, A, don't treat it like a problem, treat it like an opportunity that needs solving. And I think that could, could really help.
It's often referred to as the culture of maybe, or getting to yes. So it starts with trying to understand the problem and asking, what would it take? And then allowing the answer to dictate what it would take, and allow individuals to understand that that would take more money than I would care to spend. Or, that's exactly the right amount of money that I'm going to go fundraise. But I think that, that's a great summary of what I've seen be persistent. I know that there has been some challenging years, and some understaffed years, and some transitions and changeover, but I also know our current city administrator is looking to improve our, our public image as well as interactions. And so, I would hope that that, that discussion point could travel that way. I believe it was Mr. Markot.
I've got two items. One is not this agenda item, and the other one, I'm not sure if it is or isn't. Uh, but when we were talking about emails, and I got an email from Amy today, I didn't have a chance to digest the whole thing. Is that email the same content, hmm, with, which we just discussed? Because what I saw in the email quickly was boat launch, red shop. Is that also part of the discussion? Because you said ADA ramp, hmm, I thought, is that an apartment?
Oh, that was different.
The ADA ramp, I was giving a specific, uh, example of a recent interaction with planning and code.
But, but the red shop and the boat launch is also part of the same discussion?
I think that's specifically the permit issue that was referenced.
Permitting, yeah. But, uh, I'll have a chance to, hmm, digest the whole thing probably tomorrow. And I have another thing later.
Okay, Mr. Dupree?
I'd just like to parallel what, uh, Amy was saying. Uh, the last fifteen years, I've worked with a lot of contractors and business people. And the one common denominator that we keep hearing in the store is that Lewiston is not business-friendly. Uh, Mike Gatto was reluctant a few weeks back, saying that he preferred to work with other communities versus working with Lewiston. And this is something that, uh, it, you sit here and you say, well, what can I do to try to change that around? And talking to these guys, uh, and like Amy said, you know, they talk to the city, and the city doesn't respond, or the city is reluctant to give me answers that they want to hear and work with. And somewhere along the line, Lewiston has got to put their act together and say, hey, we need business in Lewiston, and we need contractors here working, and how do we go about getting them here? And I think by opening our minds a little bit, and be a little bit more expansive, that, uh, we, we can get these people to start building apartments or businesses here, and we've got to show an effort to the business community that we're open for business. How we do it, I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Markot, I believe you wanted to propose another piece of other business?
Something that I'd taken note, and I forgot to bring it up during acquisitions and dispositions. From my understanding, the city is looking to acquire South Lewiston Little League?
I believe that is-
The property or the league?
The property.
Says a former athletic parent. Please don't get in the business of that.
Grammatics. Mrs. Shapiro would not be happy with that.
I think, uh, the fields, perhaps, is maybe what you're saying.
Yeah, the property itself. Some, some sort of trade-off, hmm, for recreational needs when Conner School was built, uh, over Franklin Pastures, which I thought Hudson Bus Lines was the trade-off of that. I don't know, hmm, why there's still an outstanding, uh, chit, I guess it would be called. Hmm, where we have to acquire something else to meet that, uh, probably environmental requirement.
I think the question started with, do you know if they're trying to acquire the fields? And the second is, is, is it related to the EPA trade-off relative to Franklin pasture?
That, and the surrounding purpose of it is, when's it gonna come to us for acquisitions and dispositions? Because, hmm, today was the first time I ever heard of it, and here we are tonight talking about acquisitions in particular.
I think answer one would drive answer three.
So, I believe this was discussed at the last council meeting. The horse trading, if you will, or all of the backroom deals, or all of the deals in the open that, that take place between the city and landowners is not under my purview. I don't have access to all of that information. That is, um, you know, we, we get what is given to us from the other departments of, in purchasing and acquisitions, and we bring it to you. As to your third question, that is the exact reason why we try to get this information out on Wednesday and Thursday, so that you can get these questions to us, so that we can do the research. I have, I have no idea, uh, how to answer the, the third part of that question, because I, I, I'm not a part of the, the dealings, and so I haven't had time to, to look that up and get that answer back to you for tonight. So if I, if I would have had that question earlier, I could have, we could have looked it up and, and probably brought an answer back tonight.
Well, I only learned about that today. Um, and I don't know who the current owner of the, hmm, property is. I know-
The diocese.
The diocese, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I knew it was the diocese at one point.
Still is.
Still is. So I, I, I can see the trending here, the need for financial resources, hmm, and the city has the deep pockets to purchase it. People with the Little League may not be happy. I don't know what the details are with respect to future use of the property.
There are deed restrictions according to what, uh, what I, I've read, heard on the-
Sounds like it'll be really fun when it comes in front of us.
Yeah, deed restrictions, that it has to be for recreational purposes or build a shrine.
Correct.
If I recall correctly.
Those deed restrictions were, uh, from the diocese, or the-
No, they're from the original owner who gave it to the diocese.
Gave it to the diocese, okay.
With deed restrictions.
Also sounds like, Mr. Connor, that the question came to him today, and that you can have time to answer it.
Yep.
Thanks.
Because that's at least fifty years old, because I played in that lot, um, in, in the early seventies.
I'm gonna move to agenda item number six, reading of the minutes. Um, seeking a motion to adopt the September eighth and twenty-second, 2025 draft minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Any discussion on the minutes? Roger Dupree, thank you.
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
If, if I may.
Nope. Sorry, yes, sir, go ahead. No, that wasn't a nope, I was like, we're not adjourned.
I wanted to go back to, uh, item E very quickly. I know we, we kind of went over it very quickly, but I, I wanted to get back and say I appreciate all the feedback, and, and I will take that back to the department with earnest, and we will look into all of those matters. We pride ourselves on, on trying to be the best customer, uh, you know, service office in the, in the, in the city. And so I appreciate all of the, the feedback, and we will, we will work on that.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I believe we were all there. So, favor? Thank you very much.